Can we do a roll call for that, please? Bernanke. Good to see you.
Here.
Keltner?
Yes.
Ian DeLisso?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
And?
Here.
Carissa?
Here.
Do we have any public comments? We need to check. All right, we're just going to check and see if there's anybody signed up for public comment. Okay. We don't have anybody signed up for public comment, so we will move on to our first discussion item, which is an update on the Bessie Rhodes implementation. I see. Oh, okay.
Give a second.
So, anyone needs to...
All right. We're ready when you are.
All right. Whenever you're ready, please go ahead.
Wonderful. Thank you. I apologize a little bit for the delay. We've been running around for most of the day. So what we wanted to do tonight...
Is it easier for you?
We can turn. We'll make it work. We'll figure it out.
I have it right here, so if I'm looking down.
Yeah. So what we wanted to do tonight was to really take a few minutes to give an opportunity to update the school board on essentially the status of things at Bessie Rhodes. When we take a look at our conversation points tonight, essentially, one, we wanted to give a little bit of background. So as this board well knows, we moved to add a dual-language program at Bessie Rhodes, our two-way immersion program, beginning this year in kindergarten. And one of the things that we wanted to do, we had a number of board commitments within our work there that we wanted to come back and follow up on. And then additionally, we wanted to make sure that we were continuing to strengthen our global studies program. And so tonight, we're going to touch both on essentially the beginnings of the two-way immersion program at Bessie Rhodes, but more importantly, about the work that's happening to continue to strengthen Bessie Rhodes as a global studies school with a dual-language program. Why don't we slide that so I'm not spinning as much? We'll do that. All right. So tonight, Carrie's going to join us, the principal of Bessie Rhodes, and she's going to give us kind of some updates on kind of what's going on at Bessie Rhodes to give us a quick feel of the things that are moving and are strong. And then we'll loop back in regards to some of the information and promises and commitments that we made as a district to Bessie Rhodes to give you an update on where we are at those things. And so I'll go ahead and hand off to Carrie.
All right. I need this. I lost my voice, so I'll do my best. So I'm really excited to be here. Thank you for giving us this opportunity. I wanted to just start with our mission of our school. I'm not going to read every slide. I know that they're there, and I'll kind of highlight some of the points. But I think the really big piece here that we take away is good global citizens who will contribute to and thrive in a dynamic and diverse world. That's a commitment that we have to our students and to our families. So I wanted to provide some highlights from the year. I think it's really important for you all to know where we've already gone in these short four months that feel really long, just with everything that we've taken care of. So, okay. Perfect. So we have three goals that we set forth in our school work plan. And the three goals, one is around the student achievement of our students. And what you'll see on this slide is the goal on the far left, and then on the right are some of the action steps or some of the strategies that we're using to achieve those goals. I know this is a little bit smaller, but I'll blow it up a little bit in the next slide.
We also have classes coming for you as well.
Perfect. So the first goal is around student achievement, and we are doing a small group instructional push in our building to support that, as well as really having students internalize their goals and can articulate them and are able to share what they're doing to achieve their goals. We have a goal around collaborative teachers. And so some of the things we're doing for that are grade-level team meeting agendas, key instructional strategies, and some teacher-to-teacher peer observations. And then collective responsibility. We're really honing in on PBIS implementation and key strategies to support student behavior for teachers. Now, these are the commitments that us as a staff are honing in on, so this isn't part of our school-wide plan that's shared with the outside, but I think it's really important for everyone to know that we're really honing in on building trust, building trust with one another, building trust with our students, and building trust with our families. We're increasing communication between ourselves, within our building, within the admin to the families, and then within our teachers to families, and really making sure that those communication efforts are really strong. And then we really have a focus on pride in our school. So when we're talking about our school, we're really excited about the things we're doing. We're proud of where we are, and that just emanates off of everything that we do. All right. So I'm not... I promise I won't read these. They're a little bit text heavy, but I want you all to know the things that we've done around each goal. So for each goal, I have actions taken, current outcomes, and next steps. So around student achievement, just some quick highlights. We have a really strong school improvement team this year that has representation from a lot of different parts of our building, so that can include our kindergarten TWE, different fine arts and foreign language positions in our building, and then different grade-level teams and cluster teams are part of our team. And so it's really important that we have all of those different voices to help us shape what this work is looking like. And a couple of our outcomes. Teachers are implementing targeted daily instruction and increasing documented reading and math intervention plans to support the students that are below the 25th percentile and to increase students that are at or above the 90th percentile. We have a push on supporting all of our students. So that is... That's one of our other... Those are some of our outcomes. Some of our next steps around student achievement, we're really working towards celebrating students. Data analysis will be taking place next month, a continued focus on MTSS, and again, the daily small group instruction with the kids knowing their goals. So that's really the student achievement piece. Our next goal is around collaborative teachers. So some of the already... The action steps we've already taken are around biweekly grade-level team meetings, and we've really listened to our teachers and asked them for feedback around what would be ways that we can create a more cohesive team. We have a continued focus on student work and data using protocols in those meetings, and then designing professional learning based on our staff and their feedback to us. So some next steps. Continued work around student data and looking at student data and helping that guide instructional moves in our building. Continued community building. So in order to build collaboration, we need to know each other's names. We need to know the rules. We need to know what we stand for, what we believe in, who we are as people. So we're spending time doing that in the building, and then the same community building with our community. So we're really looking at different events to collaborate. Team collaboration time, and then creating structures for our peer observations. That's coming. That hasn't quite gotten off the ground. And then collective responsibility. I broke that into three pieces: parents, teachers, and students. So we've had... We have monthly parent coffees, evening parent meetings. We've had conferences where we've had feedback forms available, and then weekly communication from both me and monthly communication, at least from the teachers to the parents. The school year is off to a great start, so this is information we're getting from families. They're very satisfied with the school year and communication thus far, and they appreciate the communication that they're receiving. And we have quantifiable information, too, but this is more just some general statements. Around teachers, actions taken. We've had professional learning around equity and PBIS. We have a school culture team. So just as we spoke about the instructional team, our culture team is built of a lot of different people within our building. And we have had teacher-admin surveys and one-on-one meetings with teachers. Again, there's a show of strong teacher-to-admin trust and strong communication, and the relationships are building with the staff, with each other, and then with me and with their students. And then you can't forget the students, so that's really important for them to be a part of this journey with us. So there's a Student Voice Committee that I meet with. They're eighth graders. We have lunch together, and they share some of the things that they'd like to see in their school and how we can build relationships throughout the building. So that's been really interesting to hear their pieces. We do some reading buddies, PBIS mixers, to mix up the grade levels, and I will continue with those lunch meetings with them and create channels to help them make decisions in our building and help the collective responsibility. There's a couple of things we're doing. We will be implementing an equity plan, an equity action plan, PBIS, and some continued work with our students to ensure their voices are in our building. So that is around our goals. I will transition. Did you want me to do the next slide? They've heard my voice. But I do want to take one quick moment and just let you know that there are some great staff members from our building in the room with us tonight, and I just want... This work wouldn't be possible for me to even be sitting here without the members of the team. So they're back there, and I'm really excited that they're here.
And so the last piece of this... First off, we just thought it was really important to get a sense from the school team about the work that's happening. And I think we're really, really positive and excited about the work that's happening across kindergarten through eighth grade at Bessie Rhodes. We know that the result of some, you know, of the two-way immersion program going to Bessie Rhodes was that there were a lot of hard feelings, and that this was... To come into this year and really set a positive tone and to really begin working with staff and with students was incredibly important. And Carrie has come in and worked with Mr. Johnson and the staff and really worked hard collectively as a team to really help Bessie Rhodes continue to grow, strengthen, and become more positive and feel welcoming and more. And so watching some of the engagement at the school with staff and with parents and with students has been wonderful to see because there is a very real conscious effort to make sure that we can heal with the school community and move forward with a strong academic program. And I go back really to a comment that a teacher made to me last year, and she said, "This is really difficult. I can see why we need to do it, and I think it's the right thing for kids, but let's just make sure we do it well." And that's our commitment right now, and that quote keeps kind of playing through my head of like, "We're going to do it. We need to do it well." And so I thank Carrie and the team, who are really working day in and day out, to make this a positive outcome and for the district and for the schools and the students and the families. Couple of things that we did want to touch on. In our board memo last year, we said that we would absolutely ensure that materials would get delivered to support two-way immersion program and that we would support... I'm going to get back to that image, don't worry. That we would support summer learning projects with teachers to work across grade bands and across teams to really support the global studies model and continue to strengthen the global studies model. So this summer, actually Tracy and Ava, who are both back there, and other teachers worked together collectively on a summer curriculum project to strengthen the global studies model and to lay out a professional learning plan. And they also identified that they wanted... The team wanted to continue using resources from Participate, which are a really strong set of professional resources for deepening knowledge around global studies. So that work is continued. This diagram that's on the slide right now is really to call out that two-way immersion is just... It is a component of a global studies model. Becoming fluent in two languages, being bicultural, biliterate, is a very important component of a global studies model. It does not overcome a global studies model. It strengthens a global studies model. And that really is the way that we're moving forward with Bessie Rhodes, is this is a global studies school where we want to have a strong dual-language program, and we want all students to have it placed in the school and to be able to find themselves in learning experiences and feel as if this is safe and this is home for them. Whoops, I went the wrong way. There we go. The other District 65 commitments that we had in here was really to dig in and do a good job around staffing the school. And really, the Bessie Rhodes team deserves 95% of the credit for doing this work. This work was done collaboratively between the district and the school, but the school with Mr. Condon and then Ms. Mendez really took it on as a school hiring team. And once they realized that we want you to own this with us, they absolutely took charge of it and really have hired a strong and cohesive staff. And so we're really excited that we were able to find that right tone in a space that felt challenging at first, and then... But we were able to tap into the District 65 hiring models, and we've got, you know, Ava is one of our kindergarten teachers. We have another individual that we hired from another district with dual-language experience, and we really found wonderful people to fill in in the other slots across the school. And the intention always is to have people working together across spaces, and that is why we really frame it under the global studies model. Quick support materials were delivered on time. Essentially, all the classrooms were up and ready to go. Tracy Hubbard, the librarian, has been working on purchasing materials, and as we reported in the memo, has a pretty significant collection of materials that are ready for access for our students that are Spanish-speaking or students that want to access that that are studying Spanish. Curricular project support I talked about. The school signage project is in process. We began the conversations with Mr. Condon, but then with leadership change and also just other relative priorities around safe entries and all sorts of things. This one has kind of bumped along, but it is going to get done, and it is going to get done this year, and we will have signage up in multiple language in the interior of the school and figure out how to address that. And then the community engagement funds really come in two forms. One, we committed funds this year to lift some form of community engagement, community art project that could create an installation that would really essentially give an opportunity for parents, staff, students to come together to create something. Again, this is something that we had did some initial planning with, but then in leadership change, we really needed to take the time and let the year get started and allow people to find their legs, and we are in the process of... Carrie's been working with our chair across the district to begin to look at potential artists and opportunities. And now that we have kind of got our legs and are moving forward, I think it's the time to look into that, and I think PTA and other groups will be involved in the process of trying to figure out how we want to enact that. And then there are some additional funds that are available for the school to launch either school-based events or off-site events and to provide transportation or programming that allow families from across the grades and across programs to come together. And again, the school has knowledge of those funds and is really thinking about how they best want to use those funds, and there were some initial ideas in the memos as well. Do you want to add anything at all, Carrie? There's that.
No. Do...
Oh, yes. Sorry. Carrie just pointed out I jumped over to... Over for student enrollment and recruiting. Specifically around student enrollment, as I shared in the memo, enrollment is down 20%, and what we see is that the enrollment decreases were in a couple pockets. We have, over the years, struggled to maintain class sizes that we would really size like... That we would like in the middle school. And so I think that's where Carrie's Student Voice meeting with middle schoolers, really digging into what do students want in that Bessie Rhodes space, is really critically important. And then we also saw that more so students in that first and second grade band tended to exit, and I think it was because they could... The long view of all the way to the end and wondering what was going to happen over time with the school. As a district, we have been spending time talking about what it is that we can do in order to support kind of advertising and student recruitment at Bessie Rhodes, Oakden, and within our magnet programs of essentially ACC, taking a look at places where we are under-enrolled and really think about what is it that we can do to spread the word about the good work that is happening. And tonight, we got a chance to see some of the good work that's happening at Bessie Rhodes. At the end of last year, we got to see some of the good work that's happening at Oakden. And part of what we need to do is to make a more committed effort around advertising materials, social media, other things, in order to get the word out to community that there are some really good options for families and that can potentially meet the needs of students that are looking for something a little bit different in our district. And so we're in the process of planning that with the goal of shifting some materials with video and outreach in January through April, and probably mid-January to April because we figured that's that kind of window of time where students and families really are doing some of that ongoing debate about where ultimately they want to be in the following year. I think at this point, we have touched all the major components. Are there any particular... Whoops, that disappeared. So are there any questions?
Can I just add one more thing? And I want to salute leadership at the school, and leadership not only being in the administrative roles, but the leadership amongst the faculty, the staff, who are working really, really hard. And it's a... The tone of the school has just... Has changed. And so to Carrie and Michael Johnson, who are in the back... Who's in the back is the assistant principal, and Tracy Hubbard, who's the librarian, and Ava Martin, who's jumped right into our classes. There's a difference in a place called Bessie Rhodes this year, and it's really, really, really exciting. It's to... What you four represent is a real commitment to moving forward, and as Stacy talks about us moving in an aggressive way across the district to celebrate what Bessie Rhodes is and what it is going to be, that celebration should be loud and clear that this is a fabulous school, and it's going to get, if I may, more fabulacer, you know, as we move along. So I just want to thank the four of you and your colleagues for everything that you're doing at the school.
And also Amy Correa is also here tonight, who has really dug in on the two-way immersion programming as well. And so I want to make sure this work that we get to talk about is, I am probably the least responsible for. It's them and all of them. So, you know, it's thanks to them and the commitment to digging in and really make this work... Make this work well. Questions that we can answer?
I just want to chime in in the celebration of the work that you all have done. My daughter's really proud Rocket, and she's enjoying her time at Bessie Rhodes.
Does anybody want to get started with questions? Any of you want to start?
One of the questions that I had, and I was eager for us to have this update. Been eager for the update, really, since, I think, about a year ago. Today, we were voting yes on this expansion, and the proposal was really exciting and was eager to hear about implementation. I think one of the things that we talked about that night was an advisory group being pulled together of stakeholders to advise the implementation and some restorative work being done with some of those stakeholders. And I didn't see mention of that in the memo, and so I just wanted to hear a little bit... My... Excuse me. My assumption... I have a little bit of a call, which may not be fair.
Totally.
My assumption, which may not be fair, is that that advisory group was not convened, but I just would...
So after that, you know, we talked about an advisory group, and it was one of those things that felt like a good idea at the moment. And then when I went back to Bessie Rhodes in the winter to spring and engaged with staff and leadership, the conversation became that it is already a very small school with a lot of committees and a lot of working groups. And so the request came back to me essentially, which said, "Can we work within some of our existing structures?" And so where I went to in the spring was regularly attending the sit-team meetings and regularly kind of connecting with smaller groups at Bessie Rhodes to try to inform that work. And Mr. Condon, at that point, would also engage with PTA. And so we tried to use existing structures because when I went and said, "Should we pull people from multiple groups and create another team?", what I got was, "Can... We're already taxed and tired. Can we make it work within our existing systems?" And I do think aspects of that were good and strong. And then I think aspects of it also during the spring into the summer, as we were kind of working through some change in leadership and PTA, there were gaps in some of our engagement as well. And so that was the advisory group piece of it. Restorative work, I think we've really tried to get a barometer of how is the work going at the school to get a sense of where it is that we should work together and connect. And we did connect with staff a couple times last spring, but we did not come right back in the fall. And some of it was, I think, to give leadership and new staff space to find their legs and to kind of get a sense of then, now that we are where we are, what is it that we feel like we need? And I think we're willing to support whatever it is the community needs. But we needed some time to get a sense for what that is and really to be able to listen to Rhodes and get a sense of how we can best support the school to be successful.
And then I know we did recently, we did a restorative... Or more like a talking circle with parents, district leadership, school leadership, school staff, where we... And that's in the memo as well, about halfway through, around a couple of questions that the parents honed in on with us and the staff and those that were present. And it was an opportunity for those honest feelings to start to surface and to hear some of the concerns that had been sort of sitting there, but they didn't know when and how and what sort of place to share them in. So we're talking about what does that look like moving forward so that there's opportunities to acknowledge that there are those feelings and not to... And that was part of even like, as I came in and made the entry plan to be at the school, I met with a lot of different staff, one-on-one, just to hear those concerns and just to start to forge relationships. And it's still there. It's not like it's December now, we've kind of transitioned, everything's gone. I hear different things that come out depending on like what the event is and what we're doing, and so acknowledging that those feelings are still there. But we have a plan to move forward, and so I listen and I hear. We listen, we hear, and then we try to figure out, so what are we doing about that so that we can thrive and not get caught in just a lot of those feelings? So we have a plan, sort of, to do more of those.
And I think that we... That evening was, I think, very powerful, and it was a great opportunity to get voice in place in the circle. We didn't advertise it broadly enough, and so we ended up with, I think, a great group, but quite possibly smaller than we, you know, if we advertised it in a different way. I think one of the things that I walked away with in that conversation was certainly lots of... The third question about what can each of us do, lots of good ideas on how each of us can help move the community forward individually. And then also just the kind of pain and power of the parents saying, "You know what? I'm optimistic, but I'm cautiously optimistic because I feel like that the ball's dropped", you know, like, you know, "I've gotten an email about somebody... A leader resigning so many times." They're like, "Sometimes I'm afraid to open my email." So it's that realization of kind of that we need to continue to work through this over time and live up to our commitment at the school. And then the staff is really working hard to do that right now.
So again, I want to join in the celebration, and again, I know, you know, it's hard work to, again, get a program started and get it going, and, you know, I appreciate seeing, you know, all the different staff members here from lead administration, as well as teachers and educators. I think, you know, the ideal is that, again, you know, we leverage each other's expertise in order to move incredible changes like this forward in our district. So I really appreciate seeing you, and that's very heartening to see our district working together and leveraging each other's strengths to really move a really great... What I believe will be a great program. So thank you first for all the work that you do and that you continue to do every day for our kids. Just a couple of questions. I know in the memo I read that you're building out a dual-language framework, which, again, is going to emerge from Bessie Rhodes, but it'll become district-wide, and that's exciting to me. Because, again, you know, if we're being intentional about making sure that students come out as bilinguals, I mean, I think that is sorely needed. And I know one of the things that I've heard from parents who are part of the TWEE programs is that, again, they feel that, and particularly our Spanish-speaking families, is that they don't feel that their children are challenged enough in Spanish, right? So the hope is that the dual-language framework, you know, kind of helps address that in regards to how curriculum is executed and as well as pedagogy. Wondering if it's... Are we pulling the framework from WIDA, ASCD? So this might be a question from you, Amy. But as we think about the framework, like who, you know, what, you know, where are you drawing the framework from? And you're welcome to come up with this.
You need a microphone.
Hi, Amy. Well, the framework is coming from several different places. Cale, the Center for Linguistics, WIDA standards, also the Common Core State Standards in Spanish from San Diego. We're using as those standards to really... Because they highlight the Spanish, and I think that's what has been missing. A lot is the rigor, and so we're working very hard. And actually, Ava's on the committee, too, so I want to have my shout-out to her. But teachers are from... Of all our TWEE schools are part of the framework in developing it, as well as different administrators from... I wanted math represented. I wanted social studies, MTSS. All at... All the directors are part of the framework because I think they need to be present and collaborating. So when, you know, we're all rolling this out, we all know what each other needs and the needs of our Spanish speakers or those that will become Spanish speakers need. So it is a variety of different standards and organizations that are helping us to do that framework. do that framework.
That's, that's one of the questions I had. And, and then I know I saw, in regards to some of the goals that we, that we had, I'd love to see a goal around Spanish speaking. We're creating, we're creating a TWEE school. I mean, it's a global studies school, it's not, we're not going to overpower a TWEE. But as part of the goals, I would love to see, you know, a Spanish goal, like, you know, the student's achieving, you know, some type of competency. And then even thinking about, you know, so, so I know that ETHS offers the seal of bilingual literacy, right? So we, I'd love to get kids ready for that.
I would love that, too.
So, so, so again, that, that's kind of like an endpoint, right?
Yes.
And the seal of bilingual literacy again gets you college credit, it gets you, it's most open doors for you. So, so something to think about, right, in regards to when we think about, you know, setting goals for, for our Spanish speakers and then Spanish speakers-to-be, to, you know, how do we get those kids to that endpoint at ETHS if we want to get that seal of bilingual literacy, which again is just very, very beneficial to them. Another question I had, I know one of the things we talked about is about black student recruitment. So in the memo, you know, that one of the things, what we wanted to do is, is, again, ensure that we prioritize black students. So wondering, and again, I, I've realized that the, the, the initial class, I mean, there was low enrollment, but going forward, I mean, I know we talked about really trying to improve the way we market this.
So there are a couple of things, you know, I think one of the things that is exciting looking at TWEE enrollment this year is that we do see a higher percentage of black students in our two-way immersion classrooms and particularly at Bessie Rhodes, you know, across the district, but particularly at Bessie Rhodes and we also see it particularly at Dawes this year. And so that is very positive. And then, you know, as we look forward, I think it's a combination of things. You know, Amy's group did Tuesdays of TWEE last year, so we want to continue to provide options and opportunities for families to come and learn about the program and determine whether it feels like it's right for them. Bessie Rhodes has also been wonderful about opening, offering, you know, open houses or information sessions for people that are interested because we want people to become particularly comfortable with Bessie Rhodes as an option since we're growing the program out there. So those are opportunities there. And then we're going to continue, you know, listening to the families that are in the program to learn about the experiences and to see how else we can continue to grow and strengthen the program for those families as well as connect to their networks to continue to, to increase the percentage of black students within the two-way immersion program.
And I also want to encourage, and I'll put a plug in, I know the bilingual parent advisory committee meeting, meeting is happening this week or next week?
Next week.
So next week and I know there's going to be elections, so, so again, the, the purpose of the bilingual parent advisory committee is to advise districts on how, how a bilingual program should unfold. And, and what we do is we want to elect officers, or again, usually parents, to be able to, yeah, they have to be parents, it's a requirement. Again, so, so it's, again, a group that, again, we can, perhaps some of the parents will communicate now with the Bessie Rhodes and then, and maybe some of the other groups in Washington, you know, we can make sure that we pull some of those folks and let them know about this opportunity because, again, you know, we, we should try to strengthen the BTEC in order to help guide and also gauge how well our, the two-way immersion program is unfolding. So something to, to, as a plug out there for, for anybody who's watching, for viewers at home, that'd be really great for creating involved. I'll say in Spanish. Vamos a tener una junta del comité asesor. ¿Cuál será la fecha con?
El 10 de diciembre, el lunes.
El próximo lunes tenemos los padres que quieren venir y quieren participar y mejorar este programa de doble inmersión. Espero que vengan a participar y sean partes de este comité para mejorar nuestro programa TWEE. And, oh, and Mandarin, so.
Can I speak on the?
Sure.
Really quick. So at the PTA meeting at Bessie Rhodes last week, a representative came out and spoke to our parents there and then we reiterated the message through our weekend communication. So my hope is that somebody, a couple of people from our building attend and will continue. We take a lot of like the fast fives and, you know, put them into our parent communications. So those are opportunities to just continue to put out those district opportunities to get parent voice and to have our community represented. So we're on that. Hopefully you'll see some of our people there.
Awesome, awesome. And then I know Mandarin, I'm, I'm excited that we, that we kept Mandarin, right? And, and I think that's, it's incredible that we, you know, our kids have options and can, again, when they're little, you know, their, their brains are so elastic and it's the best time to learn is when you're small and you learn another language. As you get older, of course, our, you know, our brains can't make those connections as, as well as they can when we're kids, so it's incredible that we kept that. How many, how many Mandarin teachers are? Is it like one that kind of goes in through? So that's why I was my question.
We just have one right now that's serving our students in first through eighth grade.
Okay.
And so as, we'll, we'll continue to have those conversations to see what that can look like as we move along.
And then one more question would be, you know, as I think about global studies and providing all these different perspectives, you know, one of the things that I've always had in my mind is thinking about the ACC curriculum that we offer at Oakton. One of the things I propose is that we look at maybe including that as, as, as part of our social studies curriculum district-wide. So, I mean, if, if there's any thought to maybe making that, trying to pilot something like that at Bessie Rhodes, I don't know if that, that'd be possible or what the social studies curriculum looks like now, but, but would it be possible to add ACC as, as, in some of the lessons that can be pulled from the ACC as part of social studies curriculum?
So ACC has really a number of elements to it. You know, some of the elements are focused on morning rituals, some of the elements are focused on some of the core curric, the core curriculum is the same, but it may be that we're using different anchor texts and, and different types of culminating tasks in order to kind of bring together a greater collectivist spirit. So I think in some cases, there are absolutely things that we could lift and learn. I think the bigger picture on this one, though, could be around culturally responsive pedagogy and how there are very significant overlaps between some of the methodology and the approach in the ACC and some of Hammond's work around culturally responsive pedagogy. And so, and one of the things that's difficult, and when you have a program that is one teacher per grade, it's difficult to kind of capture and harvest and lift some of those things to share that learning. And so I think the more immediate lane and opportunity is around culturally responsive pedagogy. And Dr. Pitts has been really, you know, a wonderful leader in district. We did the two days of professional development for about half of our educators in August and we have an ongoing PLC and we're really beginning to think about how that also is an anchor for phase three of school climate work. And so we see a lot of potential onroads and we have some educators who are taking that opportunity to opt-in, use some of our professional learning choice sessions to be able to, to become ideally leaders in that space for us. So we're building our capacity there, both among our, amongst our teachers, department chairs and coaches. And I think that is a lane that can really, you know, when we look at the practice areas from Dr. Hammond that have a lot of strength for us because it's an intersection of our restorative work, it's an intersection of school climate, it's an intersection of our curricular work, it's a place where these things come together and also become very aware of what are the learning styles and approaches that will work best for our traditionally, you know, for our students of color and our second language learners by putting them at the center and in the design.
So my question is somewhat similar, but just to go back a little bit, when we were talking about the expansion and we were talking about wanting to recruit more blacks children and families, we also talked about ensuring that we created a curricular and culture and climate that was uplifting and welcoming to all of those students and families that we were recruiting. So I, I would love to hear more about how we are including more culturally responsive curricular guidance and options and tools to affirm and uplift and represent the black perspective in a dual-language immersion environment.
The, you know, so there are a couple of different levels to this answer and I feel like I'm going to answer most of it at a pretty technical level because in some ways, digging into the work that Ava's, Ava and Ms. McCordy Torres are doing in the classroom is also at the heart of this. It's going to be how we carry this forward across grades and time is going to be important. So a couple of things, when we dig into, so we did seed some summer work to really pay attention to how do we set up these classrooms and how, so one piece was setting up global studies, another was setting up the time and space to really set up classrooms. And then in kindergarten, a lot of our project work and in regards to the social studies question, we are still working in our old social studies model, but trying to work through a curriculum review to update things. Kindergarten is very focused on the individual student and Ms. Martin was involved in our culturally responsive pedagogy training last year, the two did with department chairs and coaches. And so much of what they bring to the classroom is an approach that lifts kids up and is really, you know, when I've been in that classroom, kids are moving, kids are talking, kids are acting, kids are present. And so it is within the structure of the classroom and the way that they've designed their learning, what we are going to need to do as we go forward, and I think some of our summer opportunities will allow this, would be to take a look at particular, ideally particular integrated units across literacy and social studies or literacy and science and say, are the elements of culturally responsive pedagogy here? When we purchased curricular materials, we did pay particular attention to diverse representation and books and those types of things, but those are still technical fixes. And then how we go about designing curriculum and continuing to adapt our learning, our, our classroom experiences over grades is going to be the thing that makes the difference over time.
Well, I just wanted to add that and within even the poetry of representing, when you, when we have poetry, it's like I think of in Cuba, Lisa Jose Martí and, and that a lot of the prejudice that, that experience in each Latin American country, right, against, against the African slaves were handled differently in different Latin American countries. And I think that some of, some poets are either of African Ameri, African descent in Latin America or also they themselves might be the advocates for, for having a voice for the, the black Latino in the Latin American country. So even when we were, we were thinking of some poetry, it's, it's, there was one that Jose Martí did about the black doll and it, and it talks about how this white little girl, right, has this, her favorite doll is this black doll and how the family, a very rich and prominent Spanish family in Cuba, didn't want her and, and tried to give her other dolls. And she said that the most beautiful doll of all was her, her black doll. And so then I think that within our cultures, we have tried, and I think it's just getting it out there, getting it out there for, for teachers to understand because, and I, and I can only speak for myself and Ava can speak for herself, but like when I, I know a lot of the Cuban culture because I'm Cuban and I know some Mexican culture because I've studied, I've gone through Guadalajara and I, you know, so there's that. So the more we're, we're connecting with the TWEE teachers on different Latino cultures, I think the more you'll see the voice going into the curriculum once our own understanding of each other's countries play. I hope that helped. Are there other questions?
Yeah, so the enrollment for, and I just wanted to say, African culture is embedded in all of our culture. So I would really love for the African presence in, in, in not only TWEE, but for all of our classes to be reinforced. And I know that we're working on it, so I just wanted to say that.
Absolutely, no, I appreciate that.
With regards to enrollment, I'm curious about enrollment for our kindergarten classrooms at Bessie Rhodes. It wasn't in the, the opening of schools report, so I'm curious if we're at 50/50 in terms of efficacy for, for both of those classrooms at Bessie Rhodes.
We are, so there are a couple pieces that we are not at 50/50, we are just below 50/50. And in one case, we've got, we have a couple of kids that came in TWES and are actually classified as TWEX because they moved from JEH. So they're native Spanish speakers, but they're not showing up as TWES. So we are just below the 50/50 line. When I looked at the enrollment report across the board, we did, we created, I would, the section numbers that we have are right, but we still did not do a great job of balancing our TWE, our sections last year. We've got two schools, and I don't have the exact numbers in front of me right now, but we have two schools that are still much higher percentage of native Spanish speakers in their TWEE classrooms. Washington's a good 50/50, Bessie Rhodes is just below and I need to believe another school was just below. And so we are, have started a conversation about how can we be more in front of that process? Some of this is still around siblings and around, you know, your, your home schools and we're, that's going to take time to establish more kids within Bessie Rhodes and to have families feel more comfortable going to Bessie Rhodes. But we also think that these are things that we can manage both through some of our registration processes as well as our information nights and welcoming families for tours and those types of things to make sure that they know they are welcome and that they're coming to a school that is going to value them and create a positive experience.
Okay, so we're not, but currently we're not, if, we're under, you said under 50%?
We are under 50% as far as native Spanish speakers in, in, across kindergarten at Bessie Rhodes.
Bessie Rhodes, okay.
Yep.
At the October Parent Cafe, there was a question from a parent about people who wanted to transfer into Bessie Rhodes and I know that we tried to give priority to, you know, the area that's, that's close to Bessie Rhodes and, and the area that's been identified with higher Latinos and, and blacks. But for people that might want to transfer into the program, what is the process and have we given that as an option to ensure that we are, that we, we could potentially meet those classrooms at 50%?
I would be, I would love that. And I think what we need to do is, you know, I just need to touch base with our research accountability and data team and find out how they're handling those, that process right now. Certainly we will accept applications into those, into, into Bessie Rhodes in the upcoming year, but I think if we're looking to move out of a TWEE classroom in another place in the district, it is currently other, Oakton and Bessie Rhodes are the two TWEE classrooms with the lowest enrollment at that space. And so there would be opportunities to balance of class sizes, which would be most likely welcome, but we would need to take a, look at it case by case.
Okay.
When people recall and they're interested, our enrollment registration team is always recommending them with those options and in particularly Bessie Rhodes, making sure families are aware of the program, have access to that information and are also coordinating around the marketing materials.
Sorry, I didn't realize you were back there. Otherwise I would have said, that one.
So. So I think just getting that, that information to families and then you also talked about Washington being over. So I think, you know, giving people the option to, to transfer to this, this amazing school and to, it would, it would help meet the needs of two, two schools.
Absolutely.
And then just my, my other comment was around the, the community engagement in terms of the, the Spanish, the, the Spanish-speaking families, how that, that played out, if you had a good representation of Spanish-speaking families at those events?
Sure.
And if we could possibly get some of the feedback or the, the comments that were made at those, at that event?
Sure, I can, I can. So a couple of things, and the opportunities to receive feedback from families, I offer the surveys in English and Spanish. So when the parents of the students of Spanish, like Spanish-speaking families, they're able to read in Spanish and then respond in Spanish, and so we collect their surveys in that form. I have them all at school, so I can get you that information. I would say that there is some representation at both PTA meetings and at the, the parent coffee, but the large majority of families that are turning out right now to those events are mainly our English-speaking families. And so one idea, and we're, we're looking for ideas from families that may not even be in the Spanish-speaking and TWEE, but they're offering ideas as Spanish speakers, as native Spanish speakers. And some ideas that came out are hosting and facilitating meetings primarily in Spanish and having the translation take place in English so that there's more of this inviting feeling of this is a meeting for me and I want to be here and I feel comfortable it's in my, my native language and then we can translate for those that, that come into English. And so that was one idea that surfaced. So we're really trying to be creative in ideas and opportunities to really foster the, the environment of we're all part of our school community and thinking through some creative, innovative ways to do that. And so that was one idea that a parent came up with. So I would say some are coming out and there were actually a couple of our native Spanish-speaking parents at the sharing circle. And so that was another opportunity for them to be a part of our school community and so we're really, we're, we're thinking of those ideas. But I can give you their feedback, it's positive, it speaks really highly of the teachers that they have, of the communication. All the communication from administration goes out in English and Spanish every time. So right now, the board memo that was presented tonight will be shared with our families in English and in Spanish. The slides will go out in English and in Spanish and I won't send them until they're ready to go in both languages. So there's a lot of ways that we're communicating, even if it causes me to wait a week. So there's a lot of ways that we're communicating, even if it causes me to wait a week, I don't want things going out until everyone has access to the things that we're presenting. So if there are any ideas that surface, please make sure that they're funneled back to us because we want everyone to feel a part of our community.
Yeah, I was happy to see that the Asociación de Padres Hispanos was invited to the PTA meeting last week. And I think that it's, there's really good models out there. Washington School is one of them. And so I would just hope that there's good collaboration with schools that, that are doing, that are doing it right, especially in terms of parent engagement and community building. I understand that you're getting up on your feet and, you know, getting the program rolling, but I really do think that community building and engagement is really important upfront. And, you know, one of the, the key things that stood out to me when we voted yes for this was that piece to fund and encourage this, these, these type of activities, whether it was our project, whether it's community building activities. I just hope that you can make that a priority because it's important that we don't wait until the school year is wrapping up for that to take place. Parents can be easily disengaged as, as the process goes on, and it's really easy to check out and say, you know, it's not being done, so I'm, I'm not going to do it. So I think that that's a piece that's really important to me, and that was really important to us when we included that. So I would just really like to see, hopefully, something coming sooner than later.
And, you know, there's an idea, again, again, we're, we're sitting in a place that, that has a captive audience in regards to the Head Start programs and the First Move for all programs. So again, I think, you know, when, when we, you know, during January, February, you know, maybe have like a presentation for parents here.
So that's part of our recruitment.
There's a couple of groups, that's great.
Yeah, there's, there are some creative ways that we're thinking about recruitment for our schools specifically, so those are in there. I know recruitment for the district, but of course, I'm thinking of us, but I'm also thinking of everyone else, because I, I really truly believe that too. And we've talked about J E H and having just an opportunity for our teachers and our team to come here. And as was mentioned before, any parent that's calling, whether we're looking into the kindergarten program or other programs, like we've always, when do you want to come? I met with one today after school. So when do you want to come? Do you want to tour? Do you want to bring your kid? Do you want to, like, what do you need, feel, want to see, want to talk about? And just being very individualized in terms of those opportunities to meet families, because we want more families. Now, that also poses the challenge of continuing to create community, because as you have more people entering, you have to be mindful of the fact that they are new to the community. And so they're new to the classroom community, they're new to the school community, they're new to the community overall. And so those are things that we, we have really worked with rad to hear about, the, the kids coming in ahead of time so we can make the teacher aware, so their name is up in the classroom and their teacher knows their name, and they know a little bit about them, so that when they're coming, it's not like, oh, just sit here and I'll figure it out later. Like, that's not a very welcoming opportunity as you walk into a classroom. And so I thank you for sharing the, the thoughts around the, the community engagement. That's a priority for us, and I'll work on that. But share your ideas, I'll take them.
So when we were talking about community engagement, when we were making the decision last winter, one of the things, or fall, I guess this is fall, that we discussed was about having the transportation available as well. And I imagine that as, as a parent that was just going through the kindergarten registration process, distance from home did make a difference for me. And I'm guessing that other folks will be, are considering that and feeling that right now. And I feel like maybe folks would feel reassured if we had a solid plan for using those transportation dollars and it was communicated, and even during the registration process, being able to say, you know, as a school, we provide a bus or a taxi service or whatever to make sure that we can get you to our school-wide events, our celebrations, our performances, et cetera. Like, that's how much we want you and your family to be included. And the idea was that that in itself was going to be an element of building community in, in the building. The other question I have, this totally unrelated to that, was around the enrollment. You said that the kindergarten is currently a little less than 50, but I found on table six A, the TWE numbers, because in the opening of schools on the, I think, table 11, it does not have any of Bessie Rhodes' numbers, but.
But six A does?
Six A does. And it says that there are nine, uh, Spanish dominant students and 17 English dominant and five TWE Xs.
Yeah, five TWE Xs.
Are we, are you including the five TWE Xs as Spanish speakers?
I am, they're Spanish speakers, because they were native, they are native Spanish speakers.
Okay.
Would I do those numbers?
So are we then assuming that all children who are native Spanish speaking will communicate primarily in Spanish?
So we, so the instructional model and the language model essentially is that nine, 80% of the instruction is in Spanish, regardless of your home lang-, your, your native. Can you do that again? Thank you, my apologies. The instructional model in kindergarten is that 80% of the instruction is in Spanish. And so, you know, teachers, the teacher, teachers do a lot of support with the language, you know, whether it's gestures, actions, repetition, things along those lines to bring kids along. But that doesn't, the, the language of instruction does not shift dependent upon the student's home language.
I think from the discussions that we had of TWE previously, and this may be a wrong conclusion, but part of my conclusion was that part of the linguistically culturally relevant experience was for Spanish dominant students being in a space where their peer, so many of their peers were speaking their home language as well as their.
Ideally, we want that 50/50 balance, so yes. So are you asking, so is your question about, am I assuming then that students that are TWE X are Spanish language dominant?
And that those nine Spanish dominant students are not feeling immersed in, in social environment that's primarily English speaking?
Yeah, so there's no doubt that we want to work to 50 distribution across all of our classrooms. And when I saw the distribution, that is not the distribution that we're striving towards. The fact that the students do have Spanish language as a native language is, you know, that spoken at home and have Spanish language is positive, but we want to get to essentially that 50/50 line. The other piece is that they're really paying attention to the language allocation and holding to that 80/20 language allocation. So there is one really significant difference for someone who is a native Spanish speaker, to have 80% of that instruction delivered in Spanish is a very different instructional experience than having it delivered in English. And so the vast majority of the curricular instruction that is happening is coming in Spanish. And you are right in the point of view from going out to recess or going into other spaces, those kids are probably hearing a lot more English, especially since it is, our program is just at the kindergarten level right now, that our environment is still very English dominant. And so we will continue to work towards that. That's not the allocation that we want to get to, but we will continue to work towards.
I just have something, because usually you'll see with families that are, that parents only speak Spanish at home, the older children will be much more dominant in Spanish than when, as, as you start having children and their older ones almost translate for the younger ones. So that child, the younger children, will not be probably as fluent, but still in a home where only parents speak to them in Spanish. But they were English dom-, they were English, they acquired English so much faster than their older siblings because they had a community, right? Their, their siblings speaking to them in English, whereas the older ones didn't have it. So that is not uncommon, especially for when you're in a big family. The smaller ones will exit, span, well, like, will test proficient in English because of it. That doesn't take away that in their home, they might speak Spanish to their parents and that's the only language they hear, but within the siblings especially, you'll probably hear English.
Just taking a quick look at kind of some pretty current numbers, the, when we look at TWE E, TWE S, and TWE X across the district, we're at 64 TWE E, 65 TWE S, and 13 TWE X. So TWE classified as EL and exited. So I think it speaks well to the number of sections that we have, and we've got to work towards the way that we're distributing kids. And again, that's going to take time, because families are going to need to develop trust with the school, and also frequently, kids move with their siblings. And so it's going to take time to kind of populate the school and get those balances right.
Okay, I'm nodding, but I don't, I'm not seeing the numbers that you just quoted, but.
I don't think those numbers.
Oh, okay, okay.
I don't, the, the numbers you quoted aren't. Yeah, I, what I have here is I had asked for some follow-up numbers, and so this is just a most recent cut, and it's all sort of, you know, out of the relative same data pool. Yours would be a little bit, is probably about a month old or so. But the numbers that you read are almost exactly the same. It's the nine TWE S and four TWE X.
And so if I'm understanding the previous discussion, there is a goal to perhaps bring some Spanish dominant students to.
So what?
Particular grade level at Bessie Rhodes if folks.
So we would be absolutely open to that. If there are native Spanish speakers who are interested in moving to Bessie Rhodes, we would very much be in favor of that. We certainly wouldn't move any families without their desire or consent. But certainly, if there were any, any families that were interested in that, particularly when we see there are certain schools that are much more skewed around the language distribution. There's one other school that is heavier TWE E, and so we wouldn't tend to move from there, but the other schools are heavier TWE S, and we would absolutely consider that. We would love to be able to do that.
Is there any reason why the, why Bessie Rhodes isn't in the, in the report?
I am not certain on that. I'm not certain.
Kylie, do you mind coming up to a microphone just to make sure that your thoughts are captured?
Sure.
So it has its own separate page of just that school, but it's not broken out by program. So I think that's something that we could do moving forward, because Stacy talked about, we think about it as a global school, but having it disaggregated to include just the TWE program separately, and then also making sure the TWE program is included yet again on the program page with all the TWE programs, we could definitely do that. We'll do that moving forward.
I think we probably just didn't update the table formats with the addition of Bessie Rhodes.
Yeah. Because I was going to say, it's in table six, but it isn't, is not in table 11, so my guess is that that's just an oversight that.
Yeah, I know that there's a whole nother separate table, just looking at the Global Studies program and not disaggregating it, but we can definitely have that also on the other table.
No, but I think what I'm saying is table 11A, which has a breakdown of the.
Yeah.
TWE program. Bessie Rhodes should be in with all the other schools.
Yeah, we can add it in there.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you so much.
Can I add just one more thing?
Yes.
I just wanted to thank Anya and Suni. When we were working on, for, on behalf of the board, the agenda setting for this year, one of the good pushes was let's have this conversation early on rather than, I think originally when I pitched it, it was later on in the year, and the, the appropriate pushback was no, let's engage in what's going on now, let's reflect on this. This conversation helps us get better at the school site. And it also surfaces the excitement that Carrie and Michael and our colleagues, Tracy's who is still here, are, are bringing to the school. And so again, just thank you both for actually pushing me and pushing us to put this on the agenda earlier.
Well, thank you for, to the team for all of the incredible work. It does sound like some really positive things are happening over at Bessie Rhodes. And so I, I hope that we can communicate that at, at kindergarten information nights and, and get people to continue to be excited about the school. So thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Thanks, Amy. Thanks, Tracy.
And then, so then we'll, with that, move on to our next final discussion topic about SB seven RIF procedures and process. Beatrice, if you'd like to.
I was just teasing, I said nothing clear as a room like talking about reductions in. I do want to just start off by saying that this is, we're doing this as a, just informational, this is not because we are anticipating any large reductions in force, this is just information for the board and for the public, so that they understand how we go through the process when we have to make a reduction in force.
A deal is working out.
Yeah.
She's getting it.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's starting to come up, so you can go ahead.
So first, so I'm not going to read every single slide, but there are certain things I'd like to highlight. So I mentioned that the purpose of this presentation is really just to give an overview of reduction in force, what it means, and how we go about doing a sequence of dismissal. I think one of the important, two important things to remember, number one, this is not a choice. This came in, in 2011 under Senate Bill seven. It amended part of the school code that talks about ratings, evaluation ratings need to be incorporated into the dismissal process, whereas before it was really just based off a seniority, and now it's not, seniority is considered, but the evaluation ratings take precedence over the seniority. Another thing to keep in mind is that there are two types of, lack of a better word, dismissals that take place, or could take place each school year. One can be a RIF, so if we have to reduce staff for some reason, we would do a RIF. This is an honorable dismissal, and teachers who are RIFed are eligible for reemployment. The other thing that sometimes takes place right around the same time is a non-renewal, which could be a non-tenure teacher that the principal has determined should not be returning the following school year. So those are different, and sometimes people use them interchangeably, but you really should not. So one is a RIF and one is a, a non-renewal. Oh, you're right on there. So we create a RIF list, and we have to share it with the union 75 days prior to the close of the school year. We do this on an annual basis, and it's something that we're required to do. The list itself is broken down into different sections. So teachers are placed on the list based on their category of position, which is really determined by the license that they hold, and their groupings, which is based on their summative ratings. In terms of category of position, things to just kind of pay attention to is each district, as they create categories of positions, those are categories for positions that you actually have. So we do not create categories of positions for a teacher who may have an endorsement, let's say, to be a high school teacher, because we could never employ that person in that position anyway. So what we do is we review each licensed teacher's endorsements, and we put them in the categories of positions. And so they have something called their current position, which is, means that's what they're working in right now, but then also other positions that they could hold. So whether they could also be an art teacher, a math teacher, or social studies. And then we just make sure that they're placed accordingly. Just as an example, I just, you know, so we've got one teacher, he's a middle school teacher, he teaches math, so that's his current assignment, but he also has endorsements in science and social studies. So he would be placed into three different categories of position, one for each endorsement that he has. And then the second piece that's taken into consideration would be the teacher's rate, summative rating. Just as a point of noting, in District 65, a teacher's summative rating is determined by their professional practice, that's 70% of their summative evaluation rating, and the other 30% is student growth, which is, would be assessed through the student learning objectives. And we really look at the teacher's most recent rating or ratings as we place them into each grouping. So Group One consists of teachers who haven't received a performance evaluation rating, and for our purposes, that would be any new teacher that we just hired. And for our purposes, that would be any new teacher that we just hired for that current school year. Also, anyone who was hired just to fill a leave of absence for that year, as well as anyone who is a part-time teacher who has not achieved tenure status. Because in our district, we do have some tenured teachers who have then gone down to part-time. We do not place them in Group 1. They have previous ratings, and so they're placed accordingly on the SB seven RIF list. For Group 2, Group 2 would be teachers who have either a needs improvement or an unsatisfactory for their most recent summative rating. And then Group 3 would be someone who has either two proficient ratings or if they were to have only one rating of proficient. So an example of that would be a teacher right now in the 18, 19 school year who's brand-new to our district. Their summative rating may be proficient. This year, they would be placed in Group 1 because their rating doesn't come out until June. And then for next year, they would be placed into Group 3 because their most recent evaluation rating would be proficient. To be in Group 4, you need to have two performance ratings of excellent, or you need to have a combination of two excellent or proficient. And again, one of the reasons this is so important, and it changes, because before, when the reductions were just done by seniority and the ratings weren't necessarily taken into consideration, this allows for the district to have some fluidity with that. And so if for some reason, someone's rating had been proficient for several years, but then they had a needs improvement or unsatisfactory, it would put them back into Group 2. So that teacher would be RIFed or honorably dismissed before someone who had stronger performance ratings, even though that other person may have more, less seniority in the district. So that's how the ratings kind of come into play. When we go through actually the sequence of honorable dismissal, it's very prescribed. So the first thing we do is we have to determine what the position is that's being eliminated, and we have to go to that category. And then we go to that category, we have to start at Group 1. And any teacher who's in Group 1 has to be reduced before, I'm sorry, honorably dismissed before we would be able to dismiss a teacher in Group 2, or Group 3, or Group 4. Within Group 1, we have discretion. And so in the past, we've, we've looked at different things, like we can see how the teacher's performing so far in Group 1. We can also look at the different endorsements that they have. We can also look at terms of demographics. So they're different. We have that opportunity when we are dismissing from Group 1. Anyone who's dismissed in Group 1, they do not have recall rights, but because it's an honorable dismissal, they're still eligible for reemployment. Makes sense? Okay. And then when we go to Group 2, you're looking at if they have, if you have multiple teachers in Group 2, then you would want to actually average their ratings. And so an unsatisfactory is a 1, a needs improvement is a 2. So you would look and see what their ratings were, how many they had at each. And then the person who had the highest rating would be the person who's retained, and the person with the lowest rating would be dismissed. Group 2 has limited recall rights, which means that if a position becomes available for which they are qualified, and you've already gone through recalling teachers from Groups 4 and Group 3, someone in Group 2 could have recall rights, but it's limited. It's only through February 15th of the following year. Whereas if you're in Group 3 or Group 4, and you are dismissed, the recall rights are for up to two years. See what's the difference Once we get into Groups 3 and 4, we're looking at their performance ratings. We also take into consideration their seniority. We also get into something that we just kind of refer to as bumping, where a teacher who is in Group 3 or Group 4, they may be able to bump a teacher. And so just as an example, one middle school math position is being eliminated. Ryan is our math teacher. He's in Group 3, and he's identified as a potential RIF. But then if you also look to see other areas that Ryan's endorsed in, Ryan's also endorsed in social studies. So when we go to social studies, we have to go to Group 1 because we always have to start in Group 1. And we see that we have a non-tenure teacher in Group 1. So that means that the, Ryan can bump the teacher who's in Group 1. So it can become kind of challenging depending on how many RIFs you have to do, and, but you have to kind of go through that process to make sure that you are dismissing the right If we get into Groups 3 or 4, and there's what we would call a tie, and this, this comes from our collective bargaining agreement with teachers, we then check to see where teachers are placed on track and step. And then if there's still a tie, then we'll look to see who has the most credit hours. And then the person with the most credit hours is the person that remains. And we've actually gotten to that point before, when we unfortunately had to do our large reduction in 2016, 2017. We did have circumstances where it was coming down to who had the most credit hours because we did have that tie. And then just quickly to summarize is just to say that this is a legal process. One more. No, that's okay. That we're, thank you. That we are following, that the teacher's license is what determines their category of positions, and then their evaluation rating is what determines the group that they're in. We always have to start with teachers in Group 1 if we have teachers in Group 1, and then proceed to the other groups. That the district does have full discretion in terms of teachers who are dismissed from any Group 1, from any position of category. And then that it's important to keep in mind that teachers have bumping rights. So as we go through the process and we identify teachers with bumping rights, we then let them know what the position is. They have to accept it. Just so that, again, by the time it comes to the Board, we're only giving you names of people who are actually going to be honorably dismissed. We're not anticipating large RIFs this year. The only thing we're looking at right now is we have maybe approximately 10 teachers who are on a 2018, 2018, either unpaid general leave or unpaid parental leave. They have to notify us by February 15th whether or not they're coming back next year. If they are coming back, then we may have to RIF someone in order to make space for the tenured teacher to return. That's very typical of our process. Any questions?
Thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions, Board?
Thank you.
Thank you. That was really pretty thoroughly explained.
Thank you very much.
The one piece that's implied in there, every once in a while, we start to think about doing early hiring as a way to do our recruiting. And the sticky wicket is, with all respect, our colleagues who are out on leave and are expecting to come back, based on the last contract we have, they have a certain date when they can tell us. And so we have to wait for that date so we can do the process of inviting them, welcoming them back to the district in the positions that they, they require. And that then has the bumping process. So it's a, it's a complicated process to set all up.
On a positive note, we have been able to move that date. It used to be March 1st, and now we're at February 15th. And so we have been able to post known vacancies earlier than, I would say, even five years ago. So we're getting them out there earlier, which is a good thing.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was our last discussion topic. There are a couple of FYIs, which we, for the most part, talked a little bit about already. So with no further business to come before the Board, this meeting is adjourned at, what time is it? 8:06 PM. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.